Your host. We are live and recording.
Good afternoon, everyone. We'll begin with an invocation today. We're pleased to have Pastor Mike Bohemis with us. Welcome, Pastor.
Is that the speaker? Is that a speaker?
Yes, I think it's picking you up.
Always honored to be in front of you guys as commissioners. And so, thank you. And this morning, I just woke up with an anticipation for this meeting. I'm sure all of us did. But I just was asking, Lord, what do you want me to pray? And so, I'm going to read these verses and just pray into this. And it just has to do with love. Comes from 1 Corinthians 13, and it says this, "Now I will show you the most excellent way. If I speak in the tongues of men and of angels, but I do not have love, I am only a resounding gong or a clanging cymbal. And if I have the gift of prophecy and can fathom all mysteries and all knowledge, and if I have a faith that can move mountains, but I have not love, I am nothing. And if I give all I possess to the poor, and I surrender my body to the flames, but I have not love, I gain nothing." And I believe this is just for Douglas County, that he's calling us to that place of love. And it says this, "And this is the love, that he would be patient, kind, without envy, without boasting, without pride, that it's not rude, it's not self-seeking, it's focused on others and not self, it's not easily angered, it's not offendable. Love does not delight in evil, but what love does is it rejoices with the truth. It always protects, always trusts, always hopes, always perseveres. This love will never fail us." And there's another scripture that says this in 1 Corinthians, "Be on your guard, stand firm in the faith, be courageous, be strong, and do everything with this love." So, Lord, I just thank you for today, for this hearing with the commissioners. Lord, I ask that you would give them wisdom, direction, and the decisions that need to be made today. But above all, Lord, I thank you that you call us to be motivated by love. And so, Lord, I pray that in all that we do, that we would do it in love. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor Bohemis. Love that verse. That has been on my heart as well. With that, we will call the meeting to order today for our business meeting for December 6. If you'll all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Attorney Pratt, do we have certification of the agenda today?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Pratt with the Attorney's Office. All of the items on today's agenda have been reviewed by our office and meet legal approval.
Great. Thank you, Attorney Pratt. Do any commissioners have disclosures for items on this agenda today?
I have none, thank you.
No, sir.
And I have none either. With that, we'll move to item two on our agenda today, which is citizen comment and organization comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than what is scheduled on today's regular agenda. You will be prompted to comment on those items at the appropriate time. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. If you do decide to comment, if you'll state your name and where you're from prior to making comments, you will have up to three minutes. And then Commissioner comments, if any, will follow all citizen comments. Are there any citizen comments in the room? Okay, Troy, do we have any citizen comment online?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comments.
Okay, and with that, I will close citizen comment and move to item three, our consent agenda. At this time, let me ask if there's any citizen comment on our consent agenda, either in person or online.
I have no online comment.
Okay, thank you, Troy. And with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
If I could just point out that Representative-elect Mr. Marshall was here earlier. He stepped out and he's back in. He might have a citizen comment.
You've asked him to have a citizen comment?
He might have a citizen comment. You closed it while he was out of the room. He might have one, so you might want to extend the courtesy to him to allow to make a comment.
Okay. Sure, Mr. Marshall, if you'd like to make a comment.
I apologize. I heard that citizen comments just on the consent agenda, and I thought they would be the general ones and had missed that since I was out. I just wanted to come here briefly to lay out what I had previously all sent you in the email. I was thinking of possibly just reading it, completing the record. But just as an overview, again, I was very disturbed by the report of Mr. Kibben that had Mr. Layden disparaging my Colorado State House colleagues and saying, "None of us would listen," and that you had reached out. Neither I nor any of my colleagues that I know of have heard from any of Douglas County's commissioners or your lobbyists in the last four weeks. And before responding to this report and coming here, I asked my entire group. So, Commissioner Layden, I really am curious who specifically you've spoken to the State House that were referenced in that election, referenced in that report. I mean, you're right that if your number-one goal is to get a license played through, which was what the prefile bill from the GOP state delegation was, yeah, we're probably not interested in listening. Or if it is to, you know, score political points against LGBTQ community, like the letter signed by the entire GOP state delegation from Douglas County in June, you're right, we're probably not interested in listening. But if you have some serious issues for Douglas County, a politically savvy individual would probably understand having a Democratic state rep in a Democratic caucus that completely controls the entire state government is a huge opportunity. I am more than willing to work with everyone here in Douglas County for the good of Douglas County. So, to shut down immediately and say, "No one's listening to you, and no one's even reached out to me or any of my colleagues that I know of," you know, seems very blind. I'm planning on being the representative for Highlands Ranch, and which by extension includes Douglas County. And I intend to represent everyone in Highlands Ranch, and that means everyone in Douglas County. Governor Polis has pointed out that 93% of the bills he's signed in the last four years have been bipartisan. And he wants to see that continue because he thinks that's why the Democratic Party is so trusted here in the state. We work with everyone to serve everyone. You have three GOP state delegates besides myself here in Douglas County. We're only allowed five bills. Any of the cultural warfare stuff is dead on arrival. That gives a huge opportunity for the other three GOP state reps to put forward very serious matters that actually impact the day-to-day lives of voters here that I'm more than willing to co-sponsor. And my Democratic colleagues are far more likely to listen to me because I'm on their team. And they also seem very genuinely fond of having their Christmas gift unicorn of a Democratic colleague coming out of Douglas County. So, again, if you'd like to get something done for the good of the people of Douglas County, I'm all ears, and I'm more than willing to meet with you for just five minutes, private, one-on-one, try and bury the hatchet real quick. Give me your top three priorities. Again, coming down here and thinking about it, though, I think it'd be a very good procedure if we have our GOP state reps that gin up some stuff, because I already have five bills that I'm looking at doing. But again, none of the cultural stuff's going to go. And again, I debated whether to do this privately, but if you're going to disparage my colleagues publicly, I'm going to publicly defend them. So, thank you.
Sure, Mr. Marshall, Representative Marshall. And let me just address that. So, to be clear, in my four years as a county commissioner, part of the onus on us is to review every single bill that comes through the legislature, both in the state and in the federal government that could affect our county. So, we are very active with our lobbying groups, both in the state and in the federal government, to ensure the highest and best for our community. Congratulations on your victory to become a representative for a part of our community in Douglas County. I do look forward to sitting down with you and having a very frank discussion about opportunities. My comments about a triple-D dynamic is reflective upon my experience going down to testify at the State Capitol in front of representatives and senators, only to find out that many of those decisions had already been predetermined. I have the highest level of respect for any public servant that chooses to serve at the Capitol, and they do phenomenal work. And I have a lot of friends that are Democrats and legislators in the Senate and in the House. And in fact, I am working very closely with a number of them on a few of the items that were discussed, that Mr. McKibben also picked up. So, that's moving forward quite well. I look forward to you being sworn in and beginning your career as a legislator. And I will take you up on that invitation. If that's an invitation to sit down with me, I accept, and I'd be pleased to sit down with you. So, thank you for being here today. Any additional citizen comment, either in person or online? Okay, well, for the second time, I'll go ahead and close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion or a motion.
I would also like the opportunity to make a comment, if that's possible.
Sure.
Representative-elect Marshall, I'd like to thank you for responding to my email and reaching out to me and inviting me to your town hall last night. I thought you were very open in explaining what your plans are for the future. And as the Commissioner from Highlands Ranch, I look forward to working with you. So, thank you for the opportunity.
Any additional Commissioner comment?
Well, I've done quite a bit of work with the Democrats before. I know, let's strike that from the recording so that nobody can use it against me later. But yeah, grab one of my cards. And Representative-elect, I'd be more than happy to sit down. You know, you've sent me an email, and I don't know, I was on vacation at the time, so I don't know if you got my response. But you asked a very interesting question that has actually come up with an HOA meeting I attended last Thursday, that if you're serious about it, yeah, I'd be more than happy to work with you on it.
Okay, so moving back to our consent agenda, I was informed that item 3F, which is a resolution in support of Colorado Gives Day in Douglas County on December 6, 2022, as promoted by Douglas County Community Foundation, that we pull that from our consent agenda because we do have Director Mike Wade here to provide a presentation to us. So, I will accept a motion with regard to the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve the requests in all items A through E and G through W of the consent agenda. Item F is to be pulled and will be read at the regular agenda.
Second.
So, there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. With that, we'll move right into that item 3F. If Kim would like to present on behalf of staff. Again, that's Kim Smith with our Community Resource Program.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Kim Smith, representing Community Services Staff. Okay, there it goes, sorry. Kim Smith, representing Community Services Staff. The request before you today is to approve the resolution proclaiming December 6, 2022, as Colorado Gives Day in Douglas County. Colorado Gives Day is a statewide celebration of philanthropy and highlights the importance of giving to local organizations. Douglas County Community Foundation sponsors Colorado Gives Day locally through the Douglas County Gives Program to increase awareness of nonprofit organizations located in the county. Donations support local nonprofits and informs residents of community needs that are often unnoticed. The Community Foundation partners with local nonprofits to build organizational capacity and support their efforts to improve the quality of life in Douglas County. Staff recommends approval of the resolution proclaiming December 6, 2022, as Colorado Gives Day in Douglas County as it complies with all county approval standards and policies. This concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. We do have, as Commissioner Layden said, Mike Wade, the Executive Director of the Community Foundation here today.
Thank you, Kim. Any questions for staff?
No questions.
I have none.
Okay, I have none either. Mr. Wade?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thanks for this opportunity to come and talk to you about one of my favorite days in the year. As some of you know, my favorite day is the first day of fishing in the summer, but my second favorite day is Colorado Gives Day, because this is an opportunity for our citizens in Colorado and specifically here in Douglas County as we put forth DC Gives, Douglas County Gives, which is a program to encourage philanthropy where you live, the whole "give where you live" concept. We all know the importance of shopping locally, spending your money as close to home as possible to help support your local economy. It's just as important to make sure your philanthropy is supported, the organizations that are close to your home and close to your heart. We're blessed here in Douglas County because we have over 300 active 501(c)(3) nonprofits. Makes us one of the top counties in the nation in terms of density of nonprofits to citizens. And here in Colorado, we're only one of a handful of states that offer a Gives Day every year. That both represents an opportunity for those nonprofits to gain extra funds through grants or through gifts, but also gives an opportunity for them to connect with potential donors and potential volunteers in their organizations to promote philanthropy within our community. I will say that I just pulled up through the magic of technology our current numbers here in Douglas County. Last year, if you guys remember, in Douglas County, we raised $1.6 million on Gives Day for our member nonprofits. Most of those funds usually come after 4:00 PM as people are getting off work and making their donations. But I'm happy to say, as of right now, and in fact, since this meeting started, the number has gone up just a little over $30,000 in the county. We are sitting at $819,920 raised to the minute here in Douglas County for Douglas County nonprofits. So, the numbers are doing good. We, that comes from 2,912 donors. I can say, from Douglas County Community Foundation's standpoint, since we are a 501(c)(3), we also get donations that come in today. We are right at about the number that we raised last year. And as I went through those numbers before driving down here, it was really cool to see that 80%, a little over 80% of the donations we've received so far were first-time donors to DCCF. Those are people who organically did not know that we were an option to support and now are supporting us. And a lot of that is because of the generosity of you. So, on behalf of those member nonprofit organizations in Douglas County, I want to thank you for allowing us to promote DC Gives through the grant you provided us this year. So, with that, I'm here to answer any questions you have about DC Gives or Colorado Gives Day.
Mike, thank you so much for that wonderful presentation and for all the good news. Certainly, we need that this time of year. It's wonderful. Any questions for Mike Wade?
I have none.
I do. Not about Colorado Gives Day, which you're doing a great job. I mean, obviously, the numbers tell the story of everything you and the team are achieving, which Mayor Myhead is always off to you when it comes to this, to this line of community endeavor. You're phenomenal at it.
Thank you.
I do want to put you on the spot, though.
Sure.
So, last week...
As long as it's not a math question, because you know me and math. No algebra.
Okay, then my second question. Put you on the spot. Last week, the Commissioners had a desktop exercise of an emergency response. We did a wildfire exercise. We war-gamed it through as a staff. We, after our discussion afterwards, we are planning on doing a disaster recovery desktop exercise here in calendar year '23. One of the items that came up in the discussion is, well, look at what the Community Foundation did, you know, up in the mountains with the fires that were there the year before last. And there was an idea of inviting you in, inviting in members of your team in order to participate in that, you know, exercise and how the Community Foundation could be a part of that. Just right now, I'd like to put you on the spot. Are you in?
Absolutely. And in fact, through the foresight of our board, and I'd like to say our staff, when you're looking at all of the staff right now, you know, from chief bottle washer down to janitor for DCCF. Last year, towards the end of last year, we got together to look at how we can better prepare ourselves to serve our community here in Douglas County. And actually, we created the first community emergency relief fund that DCCF has ever had. In the creation of that fund, I actually spent copious amounts of time talking with community foundations throughout the nation, and actually one in Canada as well, about how they manage their community emergency relief funds. Coming off of COVID, a lot of them had been converted more towards pandemic-style relief. But the reality is, here in Douglas County, I wanted to make sure that we were prepared for an eventuality of natural disaster, school shooting, you know, fill-in-the-blank, something that has a negative impact on a large portion of Douglas County. It was serendipitous, I don't say that lightly, that after our board decided to move forward with this and we received our first donation into that fund, the Boulder fires happened. And so, I spent some time with them, talking with them, and talking again with other community foundations. And what we've done is we've proactively prepared our policies and procedures, and that was, I think, five Ps in a row in that sentence, our policies and procedures to be prepared for when that eventuality happens. It sounds like it would be, you know, when I talk to people about it and I say, "One of the biggest challenges Boulder faced and other community foundations faced was, what happens when, within 24 hours, you have $8 million, $10 million, $12 million of donations that have come in? How do those get, that money get into the hands of those organizations who are doing the good things, who are helping address the problems?" Putting those policies in place allows us at DCCF, should the event arise, to, within 48 hours, be able to have funds in the hands of those organizations. And we've actually already gone through and started the pre-vetting process of nonprofits in Douglas County that serve in those roles. So, whether it's food insecurity, whether it's transportation, whether it's search and rescue, that way, that process gets even truncated down shorter so that we know what resources we have available, and we can access those with funds we already have and be prepared as funds come in the door to be able to get them into their hands. So, that's a very long answer. The short answer is yes, absolutely. I would love it. Count me in.
Outstanding, Mayor. Well, I'll tell you what, this is something that the board did discuss following the exercise. But if it pleases the board, I would ask that the county manager take under direction that, once that exercise gets organized, we do extend the invitation to Mike here, and so, he can represent his organization and actually be a part of our preparatory efforts when it comes to disaster recovery here in the county.
And I would support that direction. I want to applaud Commissioner Teal during that emergency management exercise. It was really his leadership to identify part two of what that exercise would look like. And truly, it's that recovery piece. We know that with the Marshall Fire, within moments, there was the Boulder Community Foundation Fund that suddenly had tens of millions of dollars in its coffers that it had to determine how to distribute quickly, efficiently, nimbly, and appropriately. You know, for years, Mike, we've talked about, this is, you know, the time. This is going to be the purpose for which the Community Foundation comes into action. I hope we never see that day. I hope we never have a wildfire like we saw in Boulder County. But we want to be prepared. And I think having that exercise, to Commissioner Teal's point, will really lay the groundwork for you all as a full board, probably not just you, I'm thinking the entire board, getting a sense of what that would look like. Because again, emergency management walked it through hour by hour, minute by minute, and we did an actual simulation. And I think it'd be wonderful for you guys to participate. My only additional comment would be just a huge note of gratitude. You've done such a wonderful job stepping into this role. The level of success that you have achieved in terms of an increase in giving, record-level giving across the board, not only with Gives Day, but just with the Community Foundation, it's really exceptional. So, I know the county recognizes that. I recognize that, and we're looking forward to more good things to come.
I appreciate that. And I want to commend you guys on being proactive with the emergency management piece. When I was Mayor of Parkers, when we had the emergency management simulation at Rocky Vista University, that involved, you know, agencies from federal government down to, I believe, the security guards at Park Meadows Mall. And I'll tell you, it was very eye-opening. And I'm glad that organizations and agencies are proactive with putting those in place because you learn things that you don't want to figure out on the job in the middle of an emergency. So, I applaud you guys for taking that initiative.
Well, thanks, Mike. I know, sitting there, we actually hired a few more emergency management personnel. They come from different parts of the country. And they were very clear with us that where they came from, it was like, well, you know, if it happens, it happens. And here, they were really surprised to see that there's a lot of advanced thought and planning that goes into these issues. Additional comments around this item F, 3F? Okay, seeing none, let me open it up for any citizen comment. Is there any citizen...
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Is there any citizen comment, either in person or online, with regard to this item 3F? Troy, do we have any online comment?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
Okay, and with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
Well, if it does please the board, I do have a resolution. I do have a motion to approve a resolution in support of Colorado Gives Day in Douglas County on December 6, 2022, as promoted by Douglas County Community Foundation.
Second.
So, we have a first and second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. With that, we'll move to item 4A on our regular agenda. And 4A is the Highlands Ranch Metro District requesting a plan review and building permit fee waiver for the new Highlands Ranch Senior Center located on East Highlands Ranch Parkway, east of Broadway. The new facility is a joint-use facility with the Highlands Ranch Metro District and Douglas County Human Services in the amount of $15,804.75. We have Tim Hallmark presenting for staff. Hi, Tim.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. Tim Hallmark for staff. Several years ago, Douglas County and Highlands Ranch Metro District started looking at a partnership for us to be able to gain a human services footprint in Highlands Ranch. With Metro District's plans for a new Highlands Ranch Senior Center, this is a good spot for us to look at co-locating so we can better serve the seniors of Highlands Ranch. Some services that will be offered out of this location, supplemental nutrition, which is known as the SNAP program, Medicaid, old-age pension, or aid for the needy and disabled financial assistance programs, as well as the electronic benefit transfer, the EBT cards, to get that footprint up in the northern part of our county will have a huge benefit for not just the senior residents, but for all residents in Douglas County. Over the last few years, it's been a little bit of a challenge at times with COVID. That kind of put a few things on the back burner for a little bit. But Metro District's been successful. They've got their spot. Basically, at 100% design at this point. And we're looking at having about a 1,500-square footprint within this building to be able to start offering those services to the county. As part of this partnership, we're requesting a fee waiver for the inspection and plan review fees. Incurred cost so far, per Commissioner Layden, is $15,804.75. There'll be some future pending fees that we'd also like to ask for a waiver for to help get this project going forward. We've got two great team members from the Metro District here. If you would like to get any more information or have any questions for them.
Okay, great. Thanks, Tim. Any questions for Tim or our guests? Would you guys like to speak at all? Or... Okay, just here for questions? Okay, all right. Any questions?
No questions.
So, Tim, I do have one question. When I was reading through the packet, and I know this from the past, that we're not the only ones that have fees, that sometimes other organizations that are involved in this development have fees also. Are we waiving those fees or just the ones that directly come from our services?
Just the ones from our services directly.
So, if a fire department or somebody else has some kind of fees, we're not addressing those?
That is correct.
I have no other questions. Thank you.
You know, maybe it's a question and maybe a little bit of a comment, too. You know, one thing that I've been thinking of as one Commissioner is this issue of, how can we synergize the social-emotional needs of seniors with the high degree of need for childcare in our community? And, you know, we've often had the discussion around what it would look like to co-locate childcare facilities within senior centers. I know that I would certainly welcome an ongoing conversation with the Metro District around how we can better serve seniors, provide that social-emotional development... around how we can better serve seniors, provide that social-emotional development for them, and then also perhaps provide some relief for parents in our community that are looking for childcare in a safe and appropriate environment. I know it's somewhat related to this. I guess, since we have the benefit of our guest being here, did you have any responses or thoughts around that, or has there been any discussion around what that looks like? And if you want to just state your name and where you're from for the record?
Stephanie Stanley. I am currently the acting general manager for Highlands Ranch Metro District. At this time, the programming we've identified for the senior center does not include anything that relates to childcare, and we personally have not identified any need, and that's not a service that we, as the Metro District, would normally provide. Certainly open to conversations, but not currently on the radar for programming at this facility.
Great. So I think we would love, I would love to put it on your radar, at least maybe have a discussion with you about that, that may be down the road when the facility's up and running. But I have just sensed an ongoing need and a sort of a win-win, a potential mutual benefit for those in the senior community and with our young families, which there's a lot of those in Highlands Ranch. So hopefully, just a seed planting and an opportunity to follow up with you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you very much. Any further questions? Okay, seeing none, let me open it up for any citizen comment either in person or online. Is there any citizen comment with regard to this Item 4A?
Commissioner, I have no online comment.
Okay, and with that, I'll close citizen comment and bring it back to the board for any further discussion and/or a motion.
I would just like to make some statements in support of this, that citizen comment is over. This has been on the radar for a long time, and I know people think that this is Douglas County and we don't have any needs, but absolutely, we know that there are seniors who are in need of services from our human services department, as well as young families and middle-aged families. So I think this is such a good move for Douglas County government to partner with the Highlands Ranch Metro District and have some space available for people in Highlands Ranch, even in Parker and Lone Tree, who want to come over to this facility, because Douglas County does not have a good public transportation. You can't get public transportation to Castle Rock. So I just think this is such a great idea. I probably should have asked this while you guys were up there. Do you have any idea when this facility will be open? Either Tim or HRMD.
We're going to look at Forrest.
Thank you for coming back up, Mr. Dykstra.
Forrest Dykstra with Highlands Ranch Metro District, manager of engineering and project manager for the project. Right now, our anticipated schedule is opening first quarter 2024.
Wonderful. Thank you. This is such a great opportunity, again, to provide services to all of the residents, because you and us serve the same residents. So thank you. And with that, I'll be making a motion to approve the Highlands Ranch Metro District's request for a plan review and building fee, building permit fee waiver in the amount of $15,804.75 for the new Highlands Ranch Senior Center located on East Highlands Ranch Parkway east of Broadway. The new facility is a joint-use facility with the Highlands Ranch Metro District and Douglas County Human Services.
You know, I mean, for me, this is, I hope I don't offend the planners, this is like a no-brainer for me. Growing up in Colorado, even as a child and as an adolescent in Greeley, you know, the senior center is more than just, pardon the phrase, an old folks' home, an old folks' place. It becomes a center that actually really rallies the community. It becomes a place for the community to gather, raising my children here in Castle Rock. The Castle Rock Senior Center, there were plenty of Boy Scout events there, there were plenty of softball parties, volleyball parties. It became a place for the community to gather. So for me, a much-needed, much-delayed improvement to the Highlands Ranch community that I heartily endorse. I speak in favor of the motion and second.
Great, so there's a first and second on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and that carries 3-0. Congratulations.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much. So with that, we'll move to Item 5, other business. Any other business today, the Board of County Commissioners? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Item 6, our county manager, Doug DeBoer.
Thank you. Just a couple items in the report to note, since Tim is here, beginning on page six, there's a very lengthy summary of all the awards that the fair won. There's a lot of them. And also, I thought is interesting, there's an article courtesy of the Clerk and Reporter's Office about how the state of Colorado has moved to the sign of the times to where driver's license now are automated and can be in your phone, especially if you have Apple Wallet. So it's upon us. Anything to add to that, Kristin?
Great. Any questions for Doug?
I did not know that was news, because I think I've had my driver's license on my phone for the like the last year, but, oh, yeah, no, it's, I know there are people that are concerned that, oh, the state's tracking you, but I got to be honest, as soon as the state gives you a driver's license, you're kind of on the track. So, but no, thanks for sharing that, Doug. Again, didn't know that was news. Cool.
Thank you, Doug, and thank you for the comprehensive report in the packet. It's really always appreciated. Let's move on to Item 7. Any Commissioner comments?
I have none. Thank you.
You know, my only comments would be kind of along the lines of the resolution we had to support Colorado Gives Day. It is the holiday season, and, you know, Pastor Mike, I'm glad you're still here, because you and I just had a conversation very much in this vein. It is the time for those of us who have plenty in our lives, those of us who have comfort, who have created the lives that we wish to live, to celebrate that, celebrate that with friends and family. But at the same token, we must always remember those among us who perhaps are falling short on their dreams, whom do have needs. And, you know, of most concern, as always, being able to feed children, being able to keep themselves and their families warm in the encroaching winter. Colorado is a harsh place once you leave the comfort of buildings and shelter. And so this is a call to action for all who may hear this. Do look to participate in Colorado Gives Day. If you have a charity of choice that is perhaps more personal to you, make that time, make that hole in your budget, always remember the needy among us in this very special holiday season.
Very well said, Commissioner Teal. And I have no additional comment. The next business meeting will be held on Thursday, December 15, 2022, at 1:30. We'll begin our land use and public hearing at 2:30 today. We are adjourned.